Okay, perfect. Thank you, Mr. Ermone. And I see Mr. Davidson here. Mr. Davidson, you got on right in time. We are ready for your presentation. Mr. Davidson, can you hear us?
Sure can. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir. Perfect. Thank you.
Sure.
We had a little technical difficulties, but we've already read you in and we're ready to proceed with your presentation.
Well, fantastic. Can, is my video coming through as well?
Yes, sir. Perfect.
Not sure if that's an upgrade or a downgrade, but at least you can see me now when I speak, so. Well, thank everyone for letting me be here this evening to speak about TMRS and hopefully answer any questions you have about TMRS in general, the retirement system, or about the proposed change that the city is discussing. Let me, my thoughts for this evening were just to be provide an overview of how kind of general sense of TMRS, make sure that everyone in the council understands the way the plan works, a little bit about TMRS, and then specifically about Castle Hills plans, and then as well as answer questions you have about the proposed change to the plan. So, TMRS, we are a statewide retirement system. We have eight hundred and ninety-eight participating cities. One of the unique things about TMRS, I said that it's, you know, kind of a participating city because every city chooses to join the plan. It is a voluntary contribution plan, and so that means that a city can choose to join TMRS, and most importantly, a city, once they join, they get to choose the level of benefits for all of the employees that work for the city. So if someone is eligible for TMRS, the amount that they participate at and all the other provisions we'll speak of are all dictated by the city. And that very first one, so how much the employees contribute, that's what's known as the employee deposit rate. With Castle Hills, that amount is seven percent. And so you have all of the members that are eligible, and eligibility for TMRS is determined by any position that normally requires a thousand hours is somebody that is going to be enrolled in TMRS. It is mandatory enrollment, so an employee can't choose to not be part of TMRS. If they meet that eligibility definition, they are going to be in TMRS. They're going to contribute the seven percent, as I mentioned. And then where the city comes in is the city is going to match all of the contributions this employee contributes, which I mentioned was seven percent, they're going to match it at a hundred and fifty percent. So currently, the city has a matching ratio of a hundred and fifty percent, and that amount is going to be matching both the contributions that they make, as well as the interest that they earn on their account. And the interest crediting rate that TMRS offers to employees is a minimum and maximum of five percent. So essentially, by law, TMRS guarantees all contributing members with Castle Hills and with other cities in TMRS an interest rate of five percent on their account. So they're putting in seven percent. They're getting five percent as an annual interest credit on that account. And then the city is matching them at a hundred and fifty percent on their account balance. Now, something I want to be very clear about is that matching from the city is something that only takes place if an employee actually retires their account. So the city, from the day someone starts, you're going to be funding their retirement, assuming they retire. But as we all know, not every employee that starts with the city works long enough to qualify for benefits. And so the only way someone actually receives those matching funds that the city has been paying in since the day they started is if they actually qualify for benefits. So within TMRS and Castle Hills, there are two different ways that an employee could qualify for benefits and actually retire their account. The first is if they have at least twenty years of service, they could retire their account at any age. The second is if they have at least five years of service, they can retire their account at age sixty. So as long as they meet one of those two qualifications, they can retire their account and draw part of their benefit based on the city's matching funds. And to be clear about that as well, one of the other things that's a little unique about TMRS compared to most of the other statewide retirement systems is TMRS is known as what is a cash balance plan. And by that, I mean when someone retires, their benefit from TMRS is going to be based on the actual dollars that are in their account. So unlike some other retirement systems, let's just take, for example, the teacher retirement system of Texas. When someone retires from the teacher retirement system, they calculate the benefit based on their years of service, their average salary, and they multiply it by a factor, and that's how they determine how much someone receives. In TMRS, someone's benefit is based on the dollars they've contributed, the interest earned on those dollars, along with the matching from the city, maybe some other financial credits that I'll discuss in a second, and then that's divided by their life expectancy. So the amount they receive when they retire is truly based on the actual dollars that are in their account at that time. Really, the other two provisions I just want to touch on briefly before discussing the change at hand is there are two inflationary provisions that the city has adopted in the past. One is for active employees and one is for retirees. The one for active employees, it's kind of a confusing name, but it's called updated service credit. This is a calculation that provides a financial credit that an employee can earn throughout their career. This is essentially the idea behind it, is to try to help a member's account be, keep up with inflation over time. And so what it does, it looks at salary changes and potential plan changes that someone's made to their TMRS plan throughout their career, and tries to update it periodically to make sure it's more reflective of their current situation. Now, this again, this calculation that runs, this can provide a financial credit that's only due if someone actually retires their account. Like the city's match, it's not something that somebody can withdraw and leave immediately. It would be something only due at retirement. And then the second is what's the known, that inflationary provision for retirees is known as the cost of living adjustment. This is a raise based on the change, the Consumer Price Index, which is the Consumer Price Index, anybody doesn't know, is a federal index that tracks the price of goods. TMRS uses this as our judge of inflation, and the city can offer a percentage of that change to the retirees. Currently, Castle Hills provides seventy percent of that difference to their retirees, and so retirees can see a raise based on that inflation, assuming there is inflation in their checks every year. And so on a very basic level, that's the city's plan. There is one last thing, and that is the city offers a life insurance through TMRS known as the supplemental death benefit. This is a benefit that's for both active employees and retirees. For active employees, it's the equivalent of one times their annual salary. For retirees, it's a fixed amount of seventy-five hundred dollars. Most people look at this as kind of a burial expense benefit, once they're a retiree, but hopefully it helps a little bit for those people once someone passes away. So the proposed change, as I understand it for this evening, is one where the city would look from changing the matching ratio from a hundred and fifty percent to two hundred percent. So basically, a one point five to one match to a two to one match. I think on one of the handouts, you can see where it has the kind of the listing of the city's current provisions, you see where it has TMRS facts on it, that shows where currently the one point five to one matching ratio, that would be changed to a two to one. But for our discussion today, to be clear about what that means is that, as I mentioned, this is something that an employee only receives at retirement. It's also, if this change take place, all changes in TMRS are not retroactive. They're only from this point forward. So if an employee has been working for the city, and let's say they've been here for, you know, twenty years. Well, the first twenty years of their career, when they retire, will still be matched at a hundred and fifty percent. Starting in January of two thousand and twenty-two, if this change is adopted, those contributions and interest for the rest of their career would be matched at two hundred percent. So it's not, this change would not affect those contributions in the past at all. The one way that this, the city's plan could affect those longer tenured employees, those employees of Castle Hills that have been part of the city for a long time, is the provision I mentioned earlier, the updated service credit. Because that calculation, which provides the financial credit, does take into account things like salary changes as well as plan changes, having that as part of your plan means that this change would also take care of or have a benefit to your longer tenured employees. So I just wanted to make that clear, that technically, this change only affects all of the contributions and interest earned after the effective date. But because you're a city that offers that other benefit, it would also have a benefit to your longer tenured employees. Now, in terms of the cost difference, I don't know if everybody has that. I think one of the handouts that was prepared was a plan change study. You can see kind of a cost analysis. The city's current plan, and I'll actually, because this is a change that can only become effective starting in a new calendar year, you know, TMRS runs on a calendar year, and so a lot of our changes can only take place starting in January. So one of the things is you can see, starting in two thousand and twenty-two, the city's contribution rate is going to be twelve point seven seven percent. And this may sound a little bit confusing, so I want to make sure it's clear. The way that TMRS assesses the cost to a city to provide TMRS to your employees, it's based on what we call a contribution rate, which is essentially a percentage of your payroll. So without any changes made, so if you keep your current plan, starting in two thousand and twenty-two, the cost of TMRS will be twelve point seven seven percent of payroll. In terms of making this change, if the city makes this change, it would increase the city's contribution rate for two thousand and twenty-two to eighteen point seven four percent. So it's about a six percent increase to your contribution rate from twelve point seven seven to eighteen point seven four. Now, I believe there was also a handout that was created that was going to show kind of the potential cost in dollars. So I think for a lot of people, that's probably easier to understand than looking at contribution rates and trying to understand all of that. The document that was prepared is based on two thousand and twenty-one dollars. So if you're looking at that handout that has kind of a breakdown between two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, et cetera, going forward, you can see that based on the city's payroll that they paid in so far for two thousand and twenty-one, in theory, if this change had taken place this year, the change from the twelve point seven seven percent to the eighteen point seven four would have been a difference so far this year of a hundred and forty-five thousand nine hundred and eight dollars. We also, TMRS has a projected payroll for the city. I don't know if this will end up being what the city's payroll will be in two thousand and twenty-two, but that projected payroll that we have for next year was, let me get it right here, is three million eight hundred and eighty-one thousand five hundred and two dollars. If that ended up being the case, then the change over an entire year would be about two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars to make this change for two thousand and twenty-two. So that was a lot of information, and I'm sure, whether it's about TMRS or about the specific change, you may have questions. So I would love any questions you have going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Counsel, do we have any questions for Mr. Davidson? Mr. Paul?
Would you comment for counsel your unfunded liability definition?
Sure thing.
At what point in time does the city be responsible for three something million?
That's a really great question. So, to be clear, what the unfunded liability is, and that's a number you would see on that plan change study going forward. So what an unfunded liability is, is that when an employee starts with the city, TMRS calculates essentially what we expect their benefits to be all the way until they retire. So from day one, you start funding an employee's retirement with the expectation they're going to retire after twenty years. So all of that is built into the cost of the day an employee starts. Now, where the unfunded liability comes in is that throughout someone's career, if something unexpected, let's say, happens. So let's just say, I don't know, a big picture, let's say that somebody's salary changes significantly, so the benefits that are going to be due to them may change over time. Or a more common example is, let's say that something happens with the expectation like our investment return assumption. So we expect to earn six point seven five percent on our investments every year. Good news is, like last year, we earned seven point six five, so that's why actually the city's rate went down next year a little bit. But let's say we didn't have a good year, and let's say instead of getting six point seven five, we got five percent. Well, that five percent is less than we expected to earn, so where do we have to pass that on somewhere? And so that adds, since there's less than expected assets, that's where additional liability would be added. So in a big picture, the unfunded actuarially accrued liability is essentially the number that the city is going to pay off over time to fund asset liabilities that haven't been covered yet by the assets. Now, to be clear about this and where you're going, this is not a number that the city has to pay off at any kind of lump sum. The amount the city pays every month goes to pay down that the city's unfunded liability. Every city in TMRS is paying off their liability to get close to a hundred percent funded. You can see, if you look at that plan change study, as of right now, the city is close to ninety percent funded. If you make this change, it would drop the city down to eighty-four point two percent funded, so you would drop down because, again, you're adding new liabilities to the plan. But each month, as the city is paying off those liabilities, it would continue to go up. And when I look at just that, what we call a projection report, I can see that number continues to go up, and then by, let's see, two thousand and twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-nine, the city is back up to ninety percent funded, heading towards a hundred percent. So that was kind of a long explanation, but essentially, those unfunded liabilities are being paid off every month, and every city in TMRS is paying those off on a regular schedule. All liabilities are paid off or amortized over a twenty-year period, and every city is moving towards being a hundred percent funded and removing those liabilities over time.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Mr. Joyce, you had a question?
Thank you, man. Yes, I did. Just a simple question. What, what happens when employees move from city to city? Are there penalties for them? Do they carry exactly what they have from one city to another?
Another good question. So because TMRS has eight hundred and ninety-eight cities, you do see cities move around a little bit. You may have an employee go from, from Castle Hills to Alamo Heights to San Antonio, different cities that participate. Within TMRS, when a city, when an employee moves to a different city, they're going to maintain their benefits as long as they keep their account active. So let's say, for example, they worked two years with Castle Hills and then worked three years with Live Oak. They now have five years of combined service. I mentioned earlier that a member would have to have five years at age sixty to retire. In this example, that employee could actually retire if they were age sixty because they have five years of combined service. In terms of the way it would be broken out, that employee, all the time, an employee, because each city has a slightly different level of benefits. When that employee retires, for example, they might have their accounts with balance with Castle Hills, which right now would be matched at a hundred and fifty percent. And then they might have their account balance with Live Oak, for example, that might be matched at two hundred percent. But the benefits and their time and their money always stays combined within the account. It just is treated a little bit differently from accounting perspective behind the scenes in TMRS. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Mr. Paul?
Yeah, what's the average salary per employee in Castle Hills? Average over all the seventy employees, you should have that, I suspect, in your report, or I should say, maybe the ones that are participating in the TMRS.
You know, in terms of, yeah, an average salary, I do not have, I have the entire payroll, I believe, for, let's see, the most finalized numbers, looks like the, I mean, if there's seventy employees, I guess I could do some math for you real quickly, council member, but I do not have the average salary in front of me. So if that's an important number to you, I can either work on it now or I can get that to you.
Make a determination. Let's say it's sixty thousand. I don't know what it is. It's somewhere in the mid-range. But then the seven percent is based on the salary gap, or sixty thousand dollars, let's say. So the employee puts in forty-two hundred dollars a year. We put in forty-two hundred plus twenty-one hundred right now. So right now, we put in sixty-three hundred, based on my numbers, to their forty-two hundred. Is that correct?
It's, it's ultimately would end up that way, but it's a little bit off because that, that sixty, and your math is correct in that where you get those, that sixty-three hundred from. The difference is this, is that because those benefits are not due today, we don't have to charge the city the full amount that it would be for the sixty-three hundred, because we know that over the course of when that person is eligible, not only are we have time to, to make those payments, but also the city is going to be earning interest on the account. So you can essentially think that that cost, let's say it is sixty-three hundred that we're going to have to pay, that amount can be discounted over time because we have the expectation of interest being paid. Plus, we know, as I mentioned earlier, not every employee is going to actually end up retiring. And so our actuaries can calculate the probability of that and reduce that a little bit more. And so that's where that contribution rate kind of comes in, in that it's, it kind of shows over time that that's why the contribution rate is not exactly the same.
Be more exact, since you were able to come up with telling us that two hundred and thirty-one thousand next year would be our increase in contribution. Thank you.
Sure.
Any further questions, counsel? Mr. Gregory?
This assumption of six point seven five percent expected return every year, based upon what?
That return assumption is based on our, in a simple term, just our expected between our investments, return assumption, the interest, I'm sorry, and the inflation assumption. Those are combined to come up with that number. It's based on our risk and our investment portfolio, essentially figuring out what we expect to earn over the long term. If it helps at all, as I mentioned, we earned six point seven five, I'm sorry, seven point six last year. And then for a ten-year period, we are right at that six point seven five. For the, I can see the last five years have been closer to eight percent, but that's essentially the number that has been calculated based on our asset allocation and the risk that we've taken on in the portfolio, kind of where our investment managers have decided is a comfortable level for TMRS. So it's basically the long-term expectation for this investment portfolio.
Is the risk in the portfolio on equity or debt?
Sorry, that's based on, essentially, right now, we do have equities in the portfolio. So it's really just, when I'm talking about risk, I'm just talking about the fluctuations in markets. So we do have everything from real return to assets, to bonds, to, you know, kind of a inflationary index funds. So we have kind of a combination of things, but just the return assumption, along with some fluctuation, along with the inflation assumption.
Over the last ten years, what percentage of what you've invested has been in equity and what percentage has been in debt? And has the debt been long-term or short-term?
The debt is kind of a combination. We have thirty percent of our portfolio in equities, thirty percent in some type of bonds, and then the remaining forty percent is broken up between different asset classes, between real estate, real return. We also have some private equity as well. And so that is something that gets rebalanced and decided by our board. They can make those assessments from time to time to decide what's most appropriate for TMRS.
Well, I was here on the council in oh eight and oh nine and oh ten. When you didn't come anything close to this, it was a huge negative, and the city had to come up with an enormous amount of money, and it had to continue to come up with that enormous amount of money for quite a while. So it seems to me you're basing a lot of this upon, hopefully, the stock market will go up and the bond market won't be ravaged by inflation. The five percent annual interest is a guaranteed interest that you're giving in the employee deposit rate. Is that correct?
That is correct. Each employee's account balance is guaranteed a five percent interest credit each year. And to the second part of that, the city is not guaranteed any interest rate. So it could be anywhere from whatever our, our board decides the credit from a negative amount to higher than the six point seven five.
So what do you do when you don't hit the nut?
When we don't hit it, is what happens is, generally speaking, that that's going to be a less than expected, it's going to be an actuarial loss. And so in theory, if that continued over time, cities would have to pay more because there's less than expected assets being credited to their account. The good thing is just to kind of follow up on that and to give a, provide a more complete answer. Every time there is a gain or a loss higher than expected, that is smoothed out over time. This helps to have cities' contribution rates not fluctuate greatly every year. But there is a ten-year period where all assets and losses, as I mentioned, are smoothed out. But generally speaking, the bottom line to what the, the point I think you're making is, yes, if we expect to earn six point seven five and we have a negative ten percent, that's got to go somewhere. And what it would be is the city's contribution, the cost of the plan, the next year would go up some to offset the less than expected assets being credited to the city's plan.
More than some, it would grow up a significant amount. I can't remember the last time you could get five percent in a equity investment, especially a treasury, even a thirty-year treasury, for some years out. Why, how did you choose five percent as opposed to a floating rate?
Well, the five percent, the first thing is, the five percent, it was kind of almost a, it's the annuity purchase rate that we use on retirees. And so part of the reason it was selected, it was always kind of, it's been there, almost like a soft floor. We've never paid out less than that. The reason that the expectation that we made that decision is that the five percent is, we didn't want, if we floated members' rates, members are looking forward to their retirement. And let's say next year, you have a person that's going to retire. And we've been showing them, hey, if you retire next year, this is the amount you're going to receive. This is a guaranteed lifetime payment. We didn't want the expectation that we now, a year out, or six months out, or whatever the case is, to be saying, hey, next year, you're now going to be receiving less than you expected because of this downturn. So locking in the members and essentially removing the downside risk for them, but also removing the upside risk, for lack of a better term, because a member is not going to receive more than five percent. So if we have a, I used the example earlier of negative ten, if we have a rate of return of fifteen percent, I mean, I told you, over the last five years, we've got eight percent return. None of those additional gains have been shared by the member. And so I think the thought was that the member's account should stay this way, and then the city, because the city is an institution that will be there long after all of us are gone, that that would be the, the place that we would leverage and kind of have more right there.
FYI, there've been periods, at least ten to fifteen years, where the stock market went nowhere. So that the return you're looking for in the stock market would be nonexistent. It's happened from the mid-sixties through the mid to late seventies in recent terms. In the public sector, excuse me, in the private sector, I only, I normally have a working knowledge of one system, and that's the Methodist Retirement Plan. And they don't have anything close to this as a matching ratio in the real world. Theirs is a hundred percent, and it's a graduated vesting, starting, I think it's over eight or nine years. So it's a very generous five years of service, and it's an extraordinary matching ratio, a hundred and fifty percent, because we're in the real world, you don't even get anything close to that. If we adopted what you're talking about, the minimum increase we'll hit to the budget we're looking at is about a quarter of a million dollars, two hundred and thirty-one thousand. It goes up dramatically if you have a stock market that doesn't continue to go up dramatically. And if you have a bond market that goes, if inflation goes up, bonds are going to be eviscerated. And you're going to have little cities like us, not looking and wishing we only have to come up with an additional two hundred and thirty-one thousand. We could balloon to a half a million more a year. I think this is, I appreciate this information. The, I notice you are using the Consumer Price Index to determine inflation. That's slowly going out of favor, isn't it? The Federal Reserve doesn't necessarily use that.
That I can't speak to. I can say that that's, it's been part of our calculation since the early eighties. And so it's just been the way the TMRS, our TMRS Act, our statutes that govern us, it's what defines the, the cost of living adjustment, the COLA, that kind of calculation. There's been talk over the years of making adjustments to it, doing everything from, you know, setting just what they call like a flat rate COLA, where a city could just not have it tied to any kind of inflationary index, but instead just do that. But that's, that would take statutory change, and it's never done that. And if you don't mind, I would like to just comment quickly on a point you made earlier, just to make sure it's a hundred percent clear. A couple of things. One, you had mentioned being on the council in two thousand and eight or two thousand and nine. That is about the time that we made a, a change, it actually a statutory change, to allow us to invest in other things. So traditionally, historically, all up until two thousand and eight, TMRS was a hundred percent invested in long-term bonds. Starting in two thousand and eight, we did diversify to try to change that, because as you mentioned, the inflationary risk in that portfolio was too high for something like what TMRS was comfortable with. So that's when we diversified. I did want to mention, I kind of talked about it earlier, but you had mentioned the stock market and equities. We do, as I said, we have about a thirty percent exposure to the stock market right now. The other seventy percent is either in, in debt and bonds. It's in other asset classes. So the hope is that that diversified, non-correlated asset classes will give us some protection about some of the investment risks that you have discussed. But sure, investment risk is always part of it in this strategy. I would hope that you understand, as I mentioned earlier, too, that if in a given year, there was less than expected return, that it would, it would certainly have an impact on the cities, but we wouldn't pass all of that impact on in one year. And the last point I'd like to make, just to make sure, I don't think I mentioned this from the start, is that any change that a council, the council decides to make or not make this evening is not something that cannot be changed in the future. So if, if your city's future changes and five years- So if, if your city's future changes and five years from now, two years from now, whatever the case is, if this matching ratio or any other benefit that you've adopted is no longer appropriate for your plan with TMRS, that, the flexibility that TMRS provides is there. So we could have this meeting again in two or five or ten years, if investment returns or whatever the other case is. And this matching ratio, if you choose to increase it, could be decreased down to the one point five to one percent. So I just wanted to be clear about that. I, I, I don't know if that eased any of your concerns, but I did want to make that clear that this, most provisions in TMRS can be increased or decreased through ordinance by the city council. Some of them just take a little more work.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned the diversification of thirty, thirty, forty. The bond market has had a forty-year bull market. I don't know any investment house on the street that says bonds looking ahead the next ten years are goodbye. They're going to go down, period. If you have inflation, it's going to wipe out what you're going to get. But I'm really curious about this forty percent in real estate and private equity. Where is the real estate primarily and who is in the private equity groups?
So a couple of things, I, to be clear, the forty percent is broken down between four different asset classes. Ten percent to real estate, ten percent to private equity, ten percent to real return, which is kind of inflationary index, and then ten percent to absolute return. That absolute return percentage is more what you'd think of as almost like a hedge fund, but we're actually moving away to that and I think we're going to allocate more towards real estate. This includes TMRS's real estate portfolio. And I will be frank with you, this is not, we have investment professionals that handle this and I'd be happy to put them in touch with you so they could actually give you some of the properties that TMRS may own. We also own some REITs and things that actually are just funds that have real estate in them. And so the allocation and all the different assets that are owned within that allocation, I wouldn't want, want to provide any incorrect information to you, so I'll have, I can follow up and get that information to you as well.
Are the real estate properties in Texas? Are they solely in Texas?
I honestly.
The Texas Municipal League.
Yeah, that's a great question. I'm not sure about that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Uh, Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick ones, Mr. Davidson. First of all, do you know how much it costs each city for your administrative cost? What is that?
So the administrative cost is actually, it combined, it's, it's just part of the overall, the fund when we, before we allocate the cost to cities, it's less than one percent. So it's less than our traditional other retirement plan.
Okay, thanks. Second one.
Sure.
A follow-up to the unfunded liability discussion. Of the three stakeholders, only one stakeholder has to pay in case the funds does not meet its goals, which is the city. Is there any chance of TMRS in the future participating in that?
You know, I mean, that's not the current plan design. You know, each city kind of has its own liabilities and assets and is responsible for their own retirement plan. You know, though chooses their own plan design, decides what's appropriate for them. So as of now, there's not a plan for, you know, TMRS, the trust fund, to take on any of the liabilities associated with the plan. We're kind of the administrators, but you know, what the future holds, I couldn't speak to otherwise.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Mr. Esbran?
Um, Mr. Davidson, earlier you referenced TRS versus TMRS. Would you, pardon me, would you repeat what you said or help me to, to better understand the comparison you were making there? And which may be viewed as a more robust plan, uh, from the viewpoint of an employee?
Sure thing, yeah. And, and I hate to speak onto the other system. I won't get into the ins and outs of the teacher retirement system. But on a very basic level, the way that their plan calculates the benefits that an employee would receive upon retirement is not based at all on what the employee actually contributes to the plan. So each teacher does pay into TRS, but the amount they receive out of the plan is not have anything to do with how much they paid in. Their retirement plan is based on their highest average years of salary, whether that's three years of salary or five years of salary. They then take that average salary, they multiply it by their years of service, and they then use some type of factor that they multiply it by. And it's essentially, it's known as what it's a defined benefit retirement plan, where it spits out this number. And that's the amount a member could receive each month for as long as they live. Where that's different than TMRS is our benefit is based on the cash balance that a member has when they retire their account. So this includes their contributions, the interest earned on those contributions, the city's matching of that account balance, and then any financial credits that are, are due, plus an annuity purchase rate. And then that amount is then divided by a member's remaining life expectancy to decide how much they would receive each month.
Thank you very much.
Very welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Esbran. Uh, Mr. May?
What is the prevailing trend in municipalities for the matching rate here in Texas?
So among TMRS participating cities, the two-to-one rate is the, the seven percent deposit rate with a two-to-one match is the prevailing rate. I believe it's close to ninety percent of participate, participants, so members are covered by that. The reason for that is that the, most of our larger cities, especially in the Dallas metro area, along with a lot of other areas that are in high competition for, for staff, a lot of times their plan is at the highest level of TMRS. We kind of have a, you know, for lack, kind of two major plans in TMRS. We have a lot of cities that are very small. I didn't mention it from the outset, but out of those eight hundred and ninety-eight cities, you know, we have cities as large as San Antonio and Arlington, Corpus Christi. But we also have cities, I believe about fifteen participating cities that have a single employee. And some of those smaller cities, they're a plan that has more of a five percent employee deposit rate and a one-to-one match. And so I want to be clear that while the vast majority of our membership is covered by a seven-two-to-one plan and a majority of our cities have a seven-two-to-one plan, it is not something that, we do have cities that have a five-one-to-one plan as well. So it's not every single city, but the majority have the seven percent employee deposit rate and a two-to-one match.
Thank you.
Sure.
Have a follow-up on that question, please.
Sure.
Is it ninety percent of majority of people who are participating in this program have that? That's not, that's not, that is not ninety percent of all cities.
Exactly correct. It is over, it's about sixty-seven percent of cities that have a, a two-to-one match. But it is where the, the membership comes in, it's ninety-four percent of the membership. So in ninety-four percent of employees are working in cities that have a two-to-one match, but about sixty-six to sixty-seven percent of the participating cities in TMRS have a two-to-one match.
Of that sixty-seven percent, are most of them small towns and cities?
I wouldn't say that most of them are small towns and cities. They are, I would say, uh, I couldn't give you a percentage, but the va- the vast majority of all of our large cities have a seven-two-to-one plan. Almost all of them above a certain threshold have a seven percent two-to-one plan other than San Antonio. San Antonio has a six percent employee deposit rate with a two-to-one match, but they do have the two-to-one match, just a lower amount the employees pay in. But I couldn't speak to also what the definition of a small town or city would be. So that threshold of what you would consider, if it's under a certain number of employees or the population of the city, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I would not say the majority of the smaller ones necessarily have a seven-two-to-one, but I couldn't say for sure.
Is Texas, does it stand out among all the states with this type of retirement program? Or all of them vary from state to state to state?
I think that's a fair statement. Each system, even within the state of Texas, we already talked about how the teachers, I mean, here in Texas, some states have one pension system for the whole state. You know, here in Texas, we have not only the employee retirement system for state workers, the teacher system, TMRS, there's a TCDRS for county workers, and each of them calculate their benefits differently. I mean, s- large cities here between Austin, Fort Worth, Dallas, Houston have their own pension systems. So it really does vary. I will tell you, TMRS is pretty unique in being that cash balance plan. Most pension systems in the United States are closer to what the teacher retirement system has, where it's based on a formula with average salary and years of service as opposed to being a cash balance plan.
Who had, does the city have any say in changing these various numbers? The numbers such as five percent fixed annual interest. By the way, is that compounded or fixed?
That is a compounded amount, so it compounds in the employee balance each year.
So that's very nice. Uh, this is, do any of the cities have any say into these numbers of what can be lowered or raised? Or are we just out of it and represented the bill?
So when it comes to that particular benefit, the amount that employees are credited with, that is something that is not up to a city. That is part of our statute and that would have to be changed by state law.
Got you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh, Mr. Davidson, I had a couple of questions for you myself. When was TMRS established?
It was established in nineteen forty-eight.
Okay. So I noticed some of the cities have a, a seven-year vesting period as opposed to a five. Can you tell me a little bit about that?
Yes, some of our, that's actually a grandfathered position, uh, provision, I should say. So new cities are not allowed to have anything other than a five-year vesting. Um, some of our cities have even like a three percent deposit rate or like twenty-five-year vet, uh, retirement eligibility. All of those are things that new cities can't have or opt into. They're just things that were part of, uh, original statutes that have changed over time.
Got you. Thank you. And you, you mentioned that if we were to approve the two-to-one this year, it could be changed back to one and a half to one next year. I mean, the following year, I'm sorry.
That is correct. I'm, I'm not sure, yes. Essentially, just to be clear, if the city makes the change at any future, you know, year, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, et cetera, this, we could have a similar meeting where the city could just choose to adopt it, where that could change, could take place. So yes, any, a change to the matching ratio could be changed back at a future date.
Okay, and one last question. If I seem to remember correctly, the majority or the employees had a vote to accept the changes, is that correct?
That's a unique thing. So what happens is of all, I mentioned earlier that most of the provisions can be changed pretty easily. One of the ones that would not be able to be changed very easily is that in TMRS statute, because it affects their actual paycheck, if the Castle Hills decided to change or reduce the city's employee deposit rate, that's seven percent. So if the city said, hey, instead of changing the matching ratio, how about we reduce that seven percent to six percent or five percent? That would have to first, before it could be acted on by ordinance, would have to be approved by, take a vote and be approved by two-thirds of the employees before it could be acted on.
Got you. And that's just for the, um, the contribution?
That is correct. It's only for the contribution. No other benefit has that built in, but that particular benefit has that provision built into it.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Do we have any further questions, counsel? Okay, and Mr. Davins, Mr. Davidson, thank you so much for your time. We appreciate it.
You're very welcome. I wish I could be there in person, but I appreciate you guys working with me to be there through Zoom.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. Okay, counsel, uh, no further discussion. We will proceed on.
Mayor, just real quick, so, um, what I wanted to mention was I again heard from employees and that's something that was, that they wanted to move to and has been asked about doing this two-to-one. And I just wanted to be able to, to provide you all the breakdown regionally here, um, of other cities and what they do. I think there's a list of about seventy cities here. And let's you know that if it's something that we want to move forward worth with, it would have to be something that would be sort of, I guess, identified out of the general fund balance um, to, to do this move, uh, from one year to the next, because the current rate is already built into the proposed budget. So as you see the difference there, um, as Mr. Davidson said, about two hundred and thirty-one thousand, that would have to come directly out of the general fund balance or reserve to do that this year, uh, to make that change.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Okay, we will proceed on to item six point four, discussion of possible action on the proposed FY twenty twenty-two city operating and capital budget. Mr. Rappley?
Mayor, could you, uh, share that real quick presentation up there?
Yes, sir. Is it on the desktop?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor Council, what I, what I wanted to go through real quick on some items um, and sort of the plan moving forward, I hope all of y'all got my memo that I had sent out in regards to follow-up questions from the last session, which covered, um, there was questions in relation to why police and fire were a little bit higher this year in certain salaries and line items. And I hope that provides you the answer that you were looking for. Um, the healthcare cost breakdown for employees, uh, and then um, a survey of the surrounding cities for, provided a cost of living adjustments in their respected cities, which included what they did last year and then what they proposed this year. So I wanted you to have that information for, uh, this discussion, uh, moving forward. And then, um, quickly, I'll go through this. So I wanted to cover again the American Rescue Plans, um, and then some unfunded requests, our COLAs, and then next steps. Um, obviously, as we've talked about it, Castle Hills is projected to receive about a million, one oh six. Um, and then, of course, eligibility use timeline of the first payment, two thousand twenty-one, which, um, I have it there as a note there that we would receive about five hundred and fifty thousand in fourteen business days and receive that notification on September first. Um, potential funding for one-time projects and additional requests in the F twenty-two budget. Uh, revenue replacement, uh, we're still looking at that number right now. Um, and the ultimate goal is to figure out what that replacement number looks like going back into the general fund and then identify those one-time projects for funding out of that ARP as well. And then here under the revenue replacement, like I said, we're determining that number and basically we'll have two figures with one total that will show as a revenue line item. One will be the combination of what that revenue replacement looks like and then the total for the one-time projects to fund this FY twenty-two with the ARP funds. Um, public safety positions, um, the certification for the fire department, um, the city hall generator, and then the IT infrastructure, cyber, cybersecurity improvements. Based on that presentation that they did, obviously, we were looking at around seventy or sixty, sixty to seventy thousand and upgrading our IT infrastructure and improving our cybersecurity. And then these were the unfunded requests and then the certification pay again for fire, that was a request the fire department had made last year and, um, the funding was not there. But again, I think the funding that comes back as our revenue replacements, we could utilize to fund. Um, the storage shed that fires requested, um, I think that we can pull that out of the individual department budget. Um, proposing that we use the funds for the station update of the phase two. Um, and then with the reimbursements of the, um, funds, we could do the traffic enforcement officer. Um, Public Works, Mr. Herada, requested the F three fifty truck that we could pull out of contingency funds because the money is there for public works vehicles. And then, of course, the city hall generator used out of the RP. And then again, the breakdown of the COLAs, um, what you have in front of you is I gave you a big eleven by seventeen because it's a little bit small in the budget packet. And you could see the breakdown of every department line item and then the total. Um, after the health insurance, we put in ten percent increase. We were able to go back and appreciate all Ms. Davis's work on that. Uh, working with our broker, we were getting to about five percent. So we were able to, uh, be on the thirty thousand positive side right now, moving forward. Um, so that's one percent COLA right there. Um, but again, my goal and recommendation is to get to a three percent COLA. Um, obviously, we'll have to see what that revenue replacement fund going back into the general fund looks like in order to, uh, make that happen. And then obviously, next Tuesday night, um, the goal is to bring back an updated general fund with, um, some of the items I've just discussed, incorporate into that budget. And then council can decide, you know, obviously, um, you know, COLAs, uh, and other matters. Um, we did put in the dollar fifty that's already built in to the increase for sanitation. Um, I know there's discussion about going up to two dollars, which would give us that extra ten thousand for, uh, the tippers and the, um, bulk items twice a year. And that's an option council would like to do if they'd like to go up to two dollars to, to do that as well. So, um, once we have the adopted budget, we can actually make decisions. once we have the adopted budget, we can actually make decisions individually on those next Tuesday night. And again, if I pull in there, depending on what the number is coming back for the revenue replacement and council decides not three percent, then we can adjust it to two percent at that time. So that, I have any questions?
Mr. Paul?
Oh.
I want you to identify for me what you're using terminology of general fund replacement. Now, let me be a little more specific.
So there's a worksheet that they provide with you for the funds, the GF O A. And we have our, our financial consultant who's helping us come up with that number that basically compares what revenue for last year's budget was and did not happen. And if it's greater than, I think, a four percent in there, you can use that to reimburse the general fund for.
What I'm trying to define, this is all a one-shot thing. It's not an ongoing year after year after year. This is a million one that we're going to get over about a year, a start, two stanches. And so these are funds that we will have for projects if we find the need, but not necessarily to use them for future revenues stream or expenses because they're not ongoing. So I want to make sure that clear.
And if you look at the total that we'll be getting, the, the million one oh six, my goal is to take a portion of that to re, to put it back in the general fund as a revenue replacement. I'm not talking about taking a million and putting it back in the general.
Understand, but let's, let's, let's take that as an example. We took your ninety thousand dollars. It's not just a one-time shot. That ninety thousand dollars stays with us forever as an increase to our salaries. Now, there's, you know, everybody sitting up here, I'm sure, without a question, thinks that we have the best, great employees. But when we have a budget based on a balanced budget of seven million one hundred thousand dollar revenue, and I got an idea, you probably, and rightfully so, squeezed the revenue the best way you could to get as much as we could. And that's your job. And then we also have a seven million one hundred thousand dollar expenses to offset that. So to me, that's what we have to be looking at to live on based on that. And these other projects, we can't start something over here that's going to stay with us forever if we don't have a way to provide that forever. Anyway, you, you get where I'm going.
And ideally, Mr. Paul, we would be establishing a separate fund, whether that's grand.
But money still has to come from someplace.
Yeah, and we would show the line item transfer in from there, what would be the replacement back in and then the one-time projects to take care of as well.
But the projects, I understand the projects are assets. I remember I used to tell my dad, we lived in a little twelve hundred square foot house, and I said, why don't we get a bigger house? He said, son, it's, this has been when I was a wee one. And he said, we can get a bigger house. I just don't want to pay the expenses on it.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Any further questions for Mr. Rapp, Mr. Gregory?
I'm not trying to add square footage here.
Just a slight clarification. I don't understand the last two paragraphs of page one. Unless I merged them together, I think I understand it. But it does say, it is my understanding this cost is covered by Bear County in the past, but cities are now responsible for this expense as a result of an investigation. An investigation of what?
That has to do with anything that our CID does investigations, Bear County, Chief Zunica or or can, would you like to elaborate? Because it's an expense we had to take in this year and years moving forward. I'll let the chief explain.
If I, if you're speaking about the the C I D investigations, all of those, for example, C I D, Bear County lab, anytime that we have a case, we develop a case. If there's anything that needs to be tested, for example, the shooting that we had up here at the Blanco at a no, the one at the restaurant back in, in April. You know, we had to pay for ballistics on that and that, that's, that's what that's, we're talking about there. It's a testing for narcotics, ballistics, sexual assaults and so forth.
Then I'm saying we're responsible for all that now.
Yes, sir. That it's, we can do, we can send it to Bear County Lab here locally where they can generate the results a lot faster, or we could send them to DPS and it could be years before we get results back.
Yes, I guess Nelson Wolf has to get the money for his walkway one way or another. Thank you. Mr. Rappley, slight in the fourth, one, two, three, fourth paragraph down to page two. Employee healthcare was originally programmed for an additional ten percent. However, it initiated a five percent decrease. Well, it actually, the sum of that paragraph is, the increase is five percent. Isn't that correct?
Yes, I'm speaking from what we plugged in at ten percent.
Oh, I understand that. But I mean, basically, the way you could put that sentence was, we only had a five percent increase.
Yes, I mean, that was last year's as well.
And when we're looking out to get the employees to come over here, I hope you stress on the payroll on, on healthcare, we're giving them, giving them six thousand four hundred and twenty dollars a year, tax-free. Tax-free to pay for their premium in the insurance area. That's a really substantial carrot as far as I'm concerned. Six thousand four hundred and twenty tax-free dollars. That'd be equivalent about nine thousand five hundred taxable dollars. So I hope we are at least stressing that a little bit. You actually think the IT support cost is only going to be fifty-one thousand dollars?
Yes, that's the proposal we have for changing IT services.
You're a miracle man if you can do it.
Again, I, as I've explained here in this memo, that there's a need to improve that area for the city. There's been areas that have been subpar. And sometimes you've got to pay a little bit more for quality, quality of service. And again, to guide you, to help you improve your IT infrastructure plan, because as you heard from our consultants at the time, we need a lot of work in that area. And so our vulnerability, cybersecurity, all that is got to be shored up.
I hope you can do it for that amount. And on the last page of page three, you have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Quite a few cities have merit increases. I thought that was illegal. I didn't think that you could do merit pay increases. Has that, has the law changed?
No, I've always looked at merit as, again, performance. You know, like one city I worked for, they had performance. Based on your annual performance, you could get from one to five percent. And that's, that's what I've always understood that as, as the ratio that the city's built for, for annual performances. So depending on that, that employee's performance in that department, that would be the, the dollars that would be equated to that. So and some cities go from, again, it could be one to two to three. One city I worked for was five percent, you know.
Now, when I started this journey, we were told you cannot have merit pay increases. That was against the law. Obviously, that's not true today. So the question I have is this. Employee X is starting out and he gets a one percent COLA this year and a four percent merit increase. Is that merit increase now becoming the new base pay for the next year?
I'm not sure. Again, we don't, what's that? Huh? We don't do merit pay, but Nora is saying yes, based on that city. Yeah. Yes.
Do you know whether or not for the cities that do this? If you have an employee who's there three years and he's received one percent COLA and four percent merit pay for three years and then leaves, you advertise for that slot to be filled, is it filled at the three percent cost, cost of living excluding the twelve percent merit?
Again, every city is different. Sometimes there's, there's a range that you use for hiring, obviously, based on experience coming in. But it's, again, I can't speak to that because we don't have merit.
I've also thought merit pay increases were an extremely good idea. We have some people in this city that work like two people.
Yeah.
I mean, they do legion's work and they get the same thing that everybody else does. It's, I like the merit pay increases, the smaller COLA and larger merit pay. I think that, that rewards people for exceptional work and they should be rewarded.
Well, I think, councilman, we could look at that and restructure that at, at the appropriate time. That's obviously throughout the year. And then working on the proposed budget next year to maybe look at doing that. But right now, I mean, we're just concentrating on what we can do for a COLA this year for our employees. Again, they didn't get an, they didn't get a COLA last year. And as you could see, some cities, most cities, you know, did give a COLA or a percentage of that merit if that city does it. So you know, I'm, I'm going to do what I need to do to get the employees the highest COLA because none was given last year.
Thank you.
And it could be one percent next year with a merit, but we need to go to doing that versus trying to change it now and just looking specifically at COLA.
Do we have any further questions, counsel? Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Rappley, just three questions, please.
Feel like the Rodney Dangerfield in two parts.
First, about sanitation department. I know a couple of months ago, we were all worried about Mr. Harada and a couple of guys left and thought about, well, are we paying them enough? Are they working, working them too hard? But it doesn't appear that anything's been added to those guys to, to address those issues. Are we comfortable if they're addressed? Are we just going to sweep it under the rug? What, what's, what's the story there?
No. So I think in this case, since we're a little bit on the surplus side from the healthcare, that we're going to go ahead and, and do an adjustment and bring that forward to you next week that takes the lowest, I think the, the basis was a fourteen, Rick, fourteen, and move that up to the fifteen, twenty-five, I think, and, and build that out into the sanitation salaries of.
Okay, so we're still working on it.
Yeah, Ms. Davis has already basically developed the ladder.
Okay.
And our steps for that department. So we can incorporate that change and once we have the adopted budget next week.
Okay.
Or allow you to adopt.
Good deal. Thanks. Next question has to do with the COLA. And you've explained to us that in a number of the departments, there are step raises and promotions and things that are happening. Would there be any significant impact to the cost of COLA if those folks who are getting something anyway didn't get the COLA? For those who didn't get that, got a COLA so that everybody gets something?
Well, again, councilman, I think they may, that might skew the, the total balance of what employees get and per salary of that position, because from my understanding is that the steps for police and fire, even in public works, has been, I don't know, in place for, I don't know how many years, a long time. And so the steps have always gone in in line with the COLAs each year, you know. So I, what's that? Stand up steps or anniversary. And so.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I understand that. It's just, we can't do a little of both, I guess. That's what I'm asking. For those that don't get a step this given year, can they get a COLA? And the others not get a COLA to, so that ninety thousand dollars becomes something less. I have no idea what.
Yeah, what's that, Nora? Yeah, I mean, it has to be across the board.
Why?
Mr. Gregory, can you turn your microphone on?
We've had type periods of time where middle management got an increase, next lower did not, the lower level did not, and you had graduated increases. So that is not true. It has not always been across the board every year. You have had certain, certain people get an increase and other people get less of an increase.
I think COLA has to be across the board. Yeah, I think you're talking about merit and step.
That's correct. You're talking about salaries. You're, you're talking about salary increases.
Yeah, the COLA across the board. But again, what's done in public safety for those has been happening, I don't know how long it's been happening. Since nineteen ninety. Go ahead, chief.
Okay, understand. Thank you, chief. It sounds to me like we need to move to a merit system, but it's my opinion. In any event, last question. Okay, well, chief, you said the merit, the step increases are less than one percent, but your salaries are going up by like forty thousand or something this year, aren't they?
Yes, because of the number of people that are happening.
Okay.
Currently, we have seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven employees that are still in the step program. They pay their steps up to six years.
Okay.
So there's that many employees that have increased through this step.
Okay, so then the, the follow-up question is in the Rodney Dangerfield scenario.
Yes, sir.
What's going to happen next year? Because that, that's a lot of money. I mean, it, you know, the forty thousand and the police, you know, some thousands themselves.
I guess.
What are we looking at next year? Is it going to be similar next year?
I guess it depends on those anniversaries if, if.
After six years, they max out. They don't continue getting another step pay at seven, eight, nine, ten.
Right, but I mean, but you've got a couple of young guys who have just been there a couple of years. So they'll continue for another four years or so.
And the same as police. I mean, we've had some new guys come on in the last year or two and they'll receive that until they've been here after their fifth year.
And such this year, I've actually lost a little bit of firefighters this year. So all of those will go back down. So it fluctuates.
Right. Okay, thank you.
But again, if it's something that's counsel would like to see next year, that we would look at a performance plan where, you know, you got your, your sort of base and mid and, and, and put that in place for employees. I would think that would still be non-public safety as well. That would be for the rest of employees. We could look at doing that as well. And that might change again based on performance and reduce the size of the COLA the following year. I'm just looking at a COLA being three percent because the employees didn't get one last year. And just theoretically, if you do one percent next year, we've kind of got the employees up two percent, two percent, which has kind of been the normal COLA over the last few years, two percent. So I'm just trying to get it to a, a balance for the employees as well.
Yeah, and I'm just trying to look a little bit into the future, which is probably not fair. It's just, it's a good thing. We got another hundred ten thousand dollars in. It's just, it's a good thing. We got another hundred, $10,000 in property tax revenue to, to help with all of this. Thank you.
Hope that answers your question. Hope that answers your question.
Say one more thing.
Mr. Joyce, Mr. Paul?
I'd just like to put a rap on this. If we did everything tonight, approve everything tonight that our city manager is proposing to us, it would amount to about $350,000 a year moving forward. So over 10 years, obviously, that's three and a half million dollars. Because it would be a continuing situation. That includes the, uh, $231,000. That includes the $24,000 that the fire department, that's including the, um, $90,000 if we went with the 3% cola. So I just want to bring that to light. Here we have 200,000 year-over-year budget that again, has been balanced, but it's 200,000 over last year. We've had some increase in revenue and we're taking advantage of it. But at this point, based on where we are, we've been at the 6.9. So we've been in the revenue area of around $7 million for a little while here. So the question becomes, what makes us think that we can all of a sudden move our revenue year after year up $350,000 to cover all the things that we're talking about here tonight? So I just want to put a rap on it and bring that to focus and we'll have to decide what we want to do.
Yeah, and I think, again, on the two to one and putting the 231,000 of this year, I, I think it becomes steady for what, five years, Nora? As far as the rate for that two to one, there wouldn't see much of an increase, uh, to it. It's just getting us there to that two to one.
It, that would still be, uh, uh, $231,000 a year over five years. Where does the money come from? If, if we're talking about just the one item.
Yeah.
Where's the money come from?
Uh, again, I think that would ultimately come up with the rate by TMRS each year, but I, I, I'm talking about just transitioning from one and a half to two.
I understand, but it, 231,000.
And I, and I get what you're saying, sir. I mean, it's again.
Again, I say, everybody up here, I'm sure wants the best and everything we can for employee. Where does the money come from? We, we have some money set from the funds we have, plus a little leftover from seed for projects. And again, the projects don't have expenses ongoing with the projects. I can see the items that the, uh, fire chief wanted. They're very pertinent. I can see $60,000 worth right away to take care of that stuff. But we don't have an ongoing expense for it. Anyway, thank you.
And again, if I, you know, if I, if I had ultimately the recommendation, I would say, you know, can't speak forever and ever, ever, every employee. But, um, I think a, a good compromise would be a two to one and maybe a 2% cola. But I, I'm, I'm just speaking from what I hear from our employees. And again, as Mr. Davidson said, you know, areas, cities like ours, trying to compete in order to recruit good folks to come to the city to work here.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley.
May I make one suggestion as you're doing, it's a minor one? The dollars that we're getting that we save for insurance, you would apply to an increase in the base pay of employees. Therefore, we're going to be paying for that increase forever on top of everything else. Why don't you just give them instead of a base pay increase, a check? Just give them a check for what, uh, what is being refunded for what we've saved for insurance? You can call it anything you want to, but you're attaching it to a permanent increase in salary forever as opposed to, we had a, we had a surplus. Here's a check. Use it right now.
Well, again, I mean, the cola is the traditional and what has been done here.
Yeah, but I'm not talking about cola.
And I don't know how the, I, I don't know how the conduit would look to do that or if we can even do that, uh, from that standpoint to, you know, cut a check to all our employees in lieu of a cola. I, I, there was something similar where I was in a city that didn't have colas that year, that a check was given out one time. Check, um, but I'd have to find out the mechanics of that.
I know what we're prohibited. This is a law against it.
Instead, what's that incentive? Incentive or launcher?
We'll look into it.
Sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Rappley, um, I have a couple of questions. Most of the cities offer insurance for employees, right?
Oh, yes.
Okay, as Mr. Gregory had pointed that out, but I kind of see that as all things equal, it's kind of irrelevant.
Did you have that breakdown, Nora? I think we did a survey. Yeah, and you'll pretty much find out that all of them for employee only pay for their health insurance.
Okay, well, that, I see that's kind of, um, the same thing all the way across.
Well, here, if you're an employee only, the city pays for it unless you're adding a spouse and/or child or. But ma- majority of the cities provide employee-only healthcare costs. The city.
City.
Yes. I'm not saying all of them, but I would say majority of them do in this area. Probably if we did this whole list and that TMRS in the regional area, we'd find out that, you know, you have the list that, that shows that they employee-only cover health insurance. That's just employee only.
Interesting, thank you.
Okay, and, and that's kind of what I thought, Mr. Rappley. I just want to get clarification. Mr. Joyce stole a lot of my ideas. I'm, I'm glad we're on the same wavelength and I just wanted to, uh, reiterate that for support.
No respect, Mayor.
Public Works, uh, we, we sat down and we talked about it. I'd really like to see us consider expanding our offerings to ensure that we're providing a higher level of service as opposed to scaling back and offering less. I feel like everything that we can do to provide more services or better services in the city of Castle Hills is an opportunity for us to set ourselves apart from any other city in the area. So to that point, I, I kindly ask that you consider, uh, the additional, was it 50 cents? So that we can add the trash dumping to protect the workers and provide bigger, um, containers and then also the bulk pickup or the bulk drop off and the bag drop off too during the seasons.
So I, I can bring for the updated budget next week that shows a $2 increase if Council wanted to do that or y'all could just make the decision to increase next week as part of the adoption.
Okay, I would, uh, have my colleagues here ruminate on that over the weekend, but it's something that I would, I'd like to see us take a step towards. I'll be the first one to say that I think that our employees deserve two to one. I've seen the way that they handled the pandemic. I think a lot of us were very fortunate that we could stay home and protect ourselves, protect our families, but that wasn't a privilege that many of our city employees were able to and partake in. And they were here every day doing the job, making sure that we could stay home safe, safely. I'm also realistic and I know that we haven't even given you a salary adjustment. It's long overdue. I don't know that this year is the year for two to one, but I think if we continue trending the way that we do, next year would be that year. If we can financially recover from COVID and we have the businesses that continue to invest in the city of Castle Hills, I believe that we'll be in a position to offer that. One of the other things that people tend to overlook is the investment that we've made into the city of Castle Hills for eight and a quarter million, which is probably $10 million by the time you include our partners. They're investing in, while everybody is excited to have that investment into our community, the unfortunate part is that means property taxes are probably going to go up because the streets are going to be better. There's going to be less drainage issues and these are all factors that play into property values. So I believe that we're going to see a little bit of a property value increase because of this investment that we've made as a city. And that investment will be able to be part of the city budget going forward. And that's money that we can use to, uh, continue vest, investing in our employees. I, I think the budget looks good and I would love to see us provide a three to one, especially because we weren't able to provide anything last year. And I believe at a minimum, that's what the city employees deserve.
I appreciate you bringing mine up, Mayor, but I want to make sure I get a cola for employees before you adjust mine.
Oh, and, and you've said that and I, I appreciate that and I respect that, but at the same time, I don't want, um, your wages to fall by the wayside because of where we're at. I, I, I understand that we're in a position, but I also want to be mindful that you, uh, were deserving of a raise or a salary adjustment, we should say, almost six months ago, and that hasn't been done. And, um, I wanted to recognize the fact that you've put that off until we could be in a better position as a city and that everybody knows that that's the case. I think that's the definition of leadership, putting others first. So thank you for that, Mr. Rappley. Mr. Isbrand?
Just a couple of comments and thank you for your comments, Mayor. First of all, that I wholeheartedly agree with what you've said about particularly public works. One thing that's sort of gnawed at me a little bit tonight, though, is what I feel is a little bit of a false flag here of we can't do these lifters, we can't do anything else unless we add another 50 cents into the fee. And it's been represented that way a couple of times tonight. That's not the case. How we decide to spend the money is up to us. And, you know, it's like we're, we're holding up services here. Maybe the, the goal here is to have, if you will, the enterprise fund of a balanced budget. We have many years not been there. And I think it's a little bit, um, confusing to say the least, to suggest that, oh, the only way we'll be able to do this now is if we increase the, uh, garbage collection fee an extra 50 cents on top of the dollar 50. So I think it's just important to, to think about that as, as we look at what this, this budget will be. The other comment I may, would, would want to make is I, I truly appreciate the desire to pay our, our employees well, to keep them here, to reward them for their excellent service. You all know I'm a state employee because we, and, and maybe I'm using this from my personal experience, we haven't gotten a cost of living increase in two years. I don't hear an argument that because we haven't gotten a cost of living increase in two years, we need to compensate for that this year by giving more than what we might be able to afford. And look, I, I think Mr. Paul alluded to this earlier. I think everybody up here would love to pay our employees as much as we possibly can to, you know, have all the things that we wish for, but there, there has to be a practical look at this too. And these are two items that have come up tonight that have just bothered me a little bit because I don't think it, it, it accurately represents the reality of the situation. Um, because you haven't gotten a cola last year doesn't mean you should have twice the cola this year. The reality is we only have so much money to spend. Just because we want to add certain services doesn't mean we have to raise fees even more than we're already planning to on top of the additional property taxes that the public will already be paying. And I really urge the Council to think about that. Our, the cost may be negligible. They are negligible. They're nominal. I think that's the way I, I characterized on the average home. The, the increase you will see is nominal, but then you put on top of that, you know, we're talking about raising the, uh, the collection fee again, and now we're talking about raising it even more than has been floated before. I just think it's really important for us, whatever we decide, to give that some thought to make sure that we really understand what the issue here is. It's not a one or the other. Um, and I think that's the way it's being represented and, and I would encourage us to think a little bit differently about that. Thank you.
And to Mr. Isbrand's point, you know, last year it was recommended for that $2 increase to get us to that sort of balance of revenue and expenditures. And I know Mr. Paul said, well, why don't we increase it to have a little bit more revenue in there and, and have that enterprise fund to be able to do purchases out of there and provide services? And again, I stuck with the dollar 50 because the only increase was done was 50 cents last year. And to, to get to that $2, that's why I programmed the dollar 50 into this current budget. The extra 50 cents on top of that, again, would provide some of that, a little, little bit of additional revenue that might be able to provide those services within that sanitation fund.
Yeah, a- and I very much appreciate that, Mr. Rappley. You were very flexible last year. I think when we asked, when we settled on the 50 cents, it was to give you time to go do the due diligence of data gathering to come back to us. But again, I, you know, i- if we raised a dollar 50 now, that gets us to the two that we wanted to. That still doesn't preclude us from doing any of the other things that we've said we've wanted to do with public works. We just need to know where our money is coming from and how we're going to spend it and what our priorities are in our spending.
And again, to that, and when we were putting the proposed budget together and adopting it last year, asking for $2 really didn't account for the cost that we now see to the landfill, you know, because of the, the people staying at home, the more tonnage, the line item has continued to go up in the landfill area.
Right, and again, wholeheartedly agree. I just would say it, it doesn't have to be one or the other, and I think that's the way we're talking about it tonight. And I hope we'll think a little bit differently about that when we come to actual adoption of the budget.
Well, my goal would be if Council would look at that every five years to make sure that we're, we're balanced and/or be able to provide additional services within sanitation.
Mr. Rappley, we were going to look at franchise fees for commercial trash people. Have we looked at that?
Uh, not in its entirety, but it's still something that we can look at.
Because we have several of that going on in our city, which I think there was an estimate of generated revenue of roughly, what, 25 grand a year or something like that?
I think it was around 30. So that's something we can take into account and start looking at. Again, the revenue.
They tear up our streets and they do damage, so we have to take care of that.
I agree. And, and again, right now, say 30,000 is not programmed. That would be franchise fees, but it doesn't seem, it doesn't mean that we can't look at something like that, um, to start collecting as the budget starts and then be able to have additional revenue.
And by the way, just, just for information, uh, the last two years, the federal cola has been 1.3. So it hasn't been astronomical. Now, I know everybody's talking about inflation. What will next year bring? Who knows? Thank you.
Okay, do we have any further questions?
Trapping, again, Mayor, uh, my goal is to bring the updated general fund. Hopefully, uh, by then we'll have some, the, the dollars recognized from the ARP to be able to fund those one-time projects, the revenue replacement. And so you can actually see the transfer in from the separate fund being the ARP funds. Uh, incorporated this 30,000 in savings right now from the increase or decrease to insurance. And, um, I'll be able to, um, put in a cola and some of the other projects and then Council can make that decision whether to keep it or not next Tuesday night.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. We'll proceed to item 6.5. Public hearing on the 2021 proposed tax rate of .524899 per hundred dollars of taxable valuation. It is 8:02 and we will open the public hearing. Okay, if we don't have anybody to speak, we will close the public hearing at 8:03 and proceed to item 6.6. Discussion and possible action, scheduling the date and time to adopt the 2021 tax rate. Mr. Rappley?
Thank you, Mayor. We have, uh, scheduled and what we'll need is a vote by Council to, uh, take action of the date and time to actually adopt and levy the tax rate, which would be next Tuesday night, September 14th at 6:30 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley.
Is it going to be roll calls? Oh, for the tax rate, so no roll call. Next Tuesday night, which is our regular city council meeting, September 14th at 6:30.
Do we have a motion, Council?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. May, on favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Council. Uh, announcements by Mayor and Council members on items of community interest, Mr. Isbrand. Mr. Paul? Mr. May, Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to quickly mention that, uh, with respect to the, uh, commu- community comprehensive plan, we had a really good discussion with our speakers, our speakers forum there, those, those, uh, few days. Said some terrific presentations on, um, some things that are actually pertinent to what we were talking tonight. Economic development for one, uh, real estate for another. And, uh, thanks to Captain for his nice presentation on crime prevention. And, uh, thanks to Councilman Isbrand for his helping us to promote it and the mayor as well. We appreciate you guys getting the word out, but it was very successful. And, uh, thanks to Councilman Isbrand for his helping us to promote it and the mayor as well. We appreciate you guys getting the word out, but it was very successful. Those, um, presentations are on the website now. For anybody who's interested, I'd encourage everybody to go look at them. Lots of great ideas, lots of good information. And I think we're off to a terrific start with our comprehensive plan. And just as a reminder, our workshops will be October 14th and 18th. That's a Thursday and a Monday evening at 5:30. For probably an hour and a half or so, hopefully live. Time will tell. But, um, in any event, we're looking forward to that. Our consultants will be, uh, on deck at that point. And we expect to have a, uh, learn a lot and give everybody the opportunity to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Mr. Gregory? Okay, I have no comments. That being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Second, Mr. Paul, all in favor? Okay, it is 8:05. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.